What is up Black City and welcome back to SpokCast. Today is a very special episode. I sit down with Sarah Dixit, a rising force in Spokane's government and a longtime community organizer who's now running for Spokane City Council in District One. She's originally from Southern California and Sarah found her second home here in Spokane after moving here to attend Whitworth University. What started as a college experience quickly turned into a deep rooted love for the city, the community, and sparked her passion for advocacy, storytelling and local change. We talk about her beginnings in grassroots organizing, like founding a reproductive rights club at Whitworth, how that led to working for Planned Parenthood and why she believes Spokane's future depends on authentic relationship building. She also opens up about her values at the heart of her campaign, the ABC's accountability, belonging and community, and shares what it's like running for office as a young woman of color in a city that is still continuously evolving. If you care about Spokane's future and want to hear from someone who's not just talking about change, but actually is out there working for it, this is an episode you do not want to miss. And on a personal note, this conversation meant a lot to me and I want to acknowledge that I do know Jonathan Bingle, Sarah's opponent, I would consider him a friend. I've had multiple conversations with him over the years. We've always been on opposite sides of things. I played fantasy football with him for over 10 years and I, and I beat him twice in two championships. It's just that our values do not align and that's why I believe conversations like this matter. It's important to Spokane to have representation that reflects all of its people. And Sarah's campaign and her presence in this race speaks directly to the kind of leadership I want to see shaping Spokane's future. Her voice, her lived experience, her values resonate with me and with a lot of people I know. And I hope they'll resonate with you too. This is a conversation that, you know, I wasn't, I shouldn't say was uncomfortable having, but you know, I don't talk a ton about politics or the sides of politics that I'm on. But I see a big shift in Spokane and how things are ran and I see a lot of people talking and I see some things trying to get done and some things not getting done. And I think with Sarah's organizational skills, her life experiences and her composure are what we should be hoping for from our leaders. We need leaders who will represent everybody. And I see that from Sarah. She will represent left, right, center. It doesn't matter who you are. She will have a conversation with you and she will make change for everyone. And I see a lot of people on the other side that care about one thing, lifting up these true American values that our president likes to tell everyone that they should believe. And I see a lot of that from her opponent and I see a lot of that from other people in Spokane. And honestly, we need less of that and we need people who care about this city and really will do something to make it better. And that's why I'm endorsing Sarah Dixit for council member in District One. And if you're submitting your ballot, live there, I hope you check the box and vote for Sarah Dixit for your council member. Enough of me talking, let's get into it. Here is Sarah Dixit. This is SpokCast. Peace. Thank you, Sarah Dixit, for so much for being on SpokCast. Did I say your last name right?
Yeah, you did.
I'm, you're running for city council member of District One, correct?
Correct.
And I, I feel like this has been a long time coming. I feel like April, your campaign manager reached out to me about, I don't know, like a month and a half ago, and now it's finally coming together. And so again, thank you so much.
Yeah, thanks for having me.
Wow. Tell your like story of what brought you to Spokane.
Yeah, so I was born and raised in Southern California, Pasadena, for those of you who know, so home of the Rose Bowl and Rose Parade. And grew up there with my family members and extended family. But when it came time for me to choose where to go to college, I wanted to basically try somewhere new. So I ended up going to Whitworth University, which for a lot of people, you know, they were surprised with the Pasadena to Spokane move. But it ended up being a really great choice for me because I really loved the small school size. And I was able to get really involved, which I really thought was a big part of my education was all that extra stuff.
Definitely.
And I got to study abroad and do all those fun things.
You get the Jan term.
Yes, exactly. Jan term was my favorite.
I grew up, I grew up in Spokane. I went to Covert Presbyterian Church, which was a offshoot of Whitworth Church. When, and my dream when I was like in high school and I was going to youth group and all the things, like I, I was, my goal was to go to Whitworth eventually. And I never did. I never got to catch a pine cone, never got to drop a lunch tray. I definitely did the ring before spring with my wife. But what, what made you like choose Whitworth?
Yeah, it was an instance of a lot of interesting events. So I was choosing between Whitworth and NYU at the time. So very, very different. Yeah. Yeah. New York City compared to Spokane. But it ended up being like a lot of things aligned. And I met a lot of great Whitworth students in a time of my life where I didn't know, you know, I'm really indecisive when I was growing up. So I could have been pulled in either direction, but it felt like the universe was telling me to go to Spokane and go to Whitworth. And it ended up being a great decision because now I am still here 11 years later.
11 years later, yeah, like, uh, what, what did you study? What was your, what did your, what did your major end up being?
Yeah, I started as a pre-med person to, you know, do the good Indian kid thing for my parents. But quickly learned I was not the biggest fan of biology and just like sitting in those classes. Shout out to all of you who did do that because I could not. And so I've always been a really good student and just like how I was raised and like expectations and stuff. But I was finding myself falling asleep in those classes. So I changed my major to sociology about like at the end of my freshman year, because I found myself being really passionate about those topics. And I was given the advice like, you know, anger doesn't always have to be a bad emotion. It can show you what you're passionate about. And I found myself really angry in those classes. And so I decided to change my major and I loved it.
That's amazing. And so where, where did that lead you to after graduating? Like you chose to stay in Spokane. What, what kept you here?
Yeah, I mean, the honest answer is, you know, graduating from college in 2018, being able to get a job and a affordable place to live were the two things that kept me here. Yeah. And it ended up, you know, and now I'm still here. So it was just a really great place to learn how to use my voice and get involved. And I think the Spokane community is really unique and I really loved getting to know it. And I think just like discover all the unique quirks about it and meet all the cool people who are pushing for change. And it never felt gatekeepy and it felt like people were really wanting you to get involved and get connected. So.
That's awesome. Like what was your like first for, for, I'm not gonna say that word. I can't say it. Foray that into like, into the community, like where, like, what was like the first thing like you took action at? Like, I'm gonna like kind of dig my teeth into this.
Yeah, Whitworth was really cool in that it asked us to do community building days. So we did those in the beginning of every year, but the first time I really like dove into it was being a college student during the 2016 election. Was an interesting time. Yeah. And so there were a lot of like political discussions happening on campus, because it's happening federally. And a big topic on campus that year was regarding abortion and regarding like reproductive rights and specifically about Planned Parenthood's connection to Whitworth. So a student took it upon himself, for whatever reason, to blast the school through our school newspaper. And basically be like, if Whitworth is actually a Christian university, it should cut ties with Planned Parenthood.
Ah, I remember this.
Yes. So everyone freaked out.
Yeah.
Donors, you know, alumni, whoever who thought that was a big deal. And so the university ended up cutting ties, but the ties that were being mentioned were the fact that, you know, Planned Parenthood was listed as a resource if someone needed that type of healthcare.
Right.
And if you're a health science student, if you did an internship there, it counted as credit.
So that was, that was a connection. Yeah. It wasn't like they, they were like.
Tabling on campus, providing like IUDs in the parking lot or whatever. Yeah. It was just those two things. So myself and some other students saw that as, you know, a big example of how there was one side being really represented on campus, but there was a whole other side not being talked about and being really taboo. So we got involved with our local Planned Parenthood here and started a reproductive rights club. And the university did not like that. And so I became a regular in the president's office, just arguing of why, you know, students deserve to have diversity of thought and how if we're supposed to be learning in this academic, you know, space, that also includes these topics that we're about to join the world and talk about. So it took two years, but by the end of that, right before I graduated, we're able to make that into a full club.
Oh, wow. Does this still exist today?
Yes, it does.
That's awesome. Yeah. It's so important to like have, I mean, to have, especially at a Christian university, to have differences of opinion and to have representation and like, and, and yeah, that's a, so like that was, so you started that and like, in, how was the like reaction like that, did it help shape your approach to like, to organizing like?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, a big part of it was getting in local media. Talking to people about the issue, making sure they're aware of what was happening on campus. And also doing data collection. So also, yeah, me and my friend did a survey and we ended up almost getting a big three for this. So if you're a Whitworth student, you know, that's one of the strikes you aren't supposed to get. And, you know, that's neither here nor there, but we were almost in trouble because we sent a school-wide survey, asking students how they felt about it. And we were told it's a violation of our email policy, but we were like, we didn't actually pull this off of anything. We went through the directory and pulled all the teachers' like emails and admin emails and we took off some. So it wasn't technically a campus-wide email. But that, you know, showed me how we do, how we use local media, how we use data and use stories to do organizing effectively. And so I took that once I graduated and through that experience, that's how I got my first job. And so I became an organizer for Planned Parenthood once I graduated. So.
Exactly. What does organizer do?
Yeah, it's a good question. So not actually like physically organizing spaces because I'm notoriously actually pretty messy. So it's basically being someone who brings community together and, you know, creating movements and spaces for grassroots activities. So if there is a big issue, you know, regarding a local election, that's getting people registered to vote, going around knocking on doors, phone banking, talking to people, making sure they're aware of what's at stake in the election. It's also getting policy passed. So, you know, when people are like, we need to pass this policy about free school lunches or something. Community organizers are often the people who have their relationships with students or relationships with teachers and can, you know, ask them, would you be able to share your story to describe why this issue is so important? Cause we know data is one thing and numbers is one thing, but it doesn't really pull at the like emotional. And, you know, humans are emotional beings. So being able to share the stories behind issues is where we see, you know, a lot more movement being made and activity happening. So community organizers are there to do that relational piece and really humanize issues.
So when you're doing organizing for like Planned Parenthood, you're finding the stories of why it's important to have, for women to have Planned Parenthood as an organization to help them if they ever need help with their health, correct?
Yeah. So making sure, you know, when people are trying to defund Planned Parenthood, we can describe like, you know, Planned Parenthood saved my life or Planned Parenthood was the only place I could get healthcare when I was a struggling college student. Just showing the vast experience and like the diversity of experience is where that like storytelling really comes into place. And yeah, so that's how I love the art of storytelling and just know how powerful it is to rely on community in that way. And I think everyone has a story. Everyone has their why.
Yeah.
So it's been cool to kind of learn what our community members feel about things and what they've gone through. And I think that really humanizes these issues that have become really political.
Definitely.
And just like, you know, bringing it down to earth, being like, your neighbor relied on this source or this healthcare for when they really needed it. Or like, yeah, I think just like the, making it less like ambiguous and scary.
We went to a question I already, that was gonna be later in the, this is how it goes. Cause I wanted to talk more about like your, also talk about your, the beginnings of like growing up in Southern California.
Oh, yeah.
Your, your parents are immigrants and, and I'm, how has that shaped your connection to Spokane?
Absolutely. So my parents immigrated from India in 1980s.
Okay.
Bit. There was like some difference there when my dad first immigrated, went to school, all those things. Went back to India, got married to my mom and then brought her over. And so growing up, the connection of family was really important to me. We had a lot of cousins that lived in the area as well. So growing up, it really took a village. I'm the youngest of three, but youngest by a lot. So my brother is 14 years older than me. My sister's 10 years older than me.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
It was kind of like being an only child, but also being like the only, because my parents were in careers that took them elsewhere. So my dad lived in San Francisco for 10 years between my age of four to 14.
Oh, wow.
So he would be there during the week, come home on weekends. So it was a different dynamic there and my mom worked for World Vision. So she would do like long periods of time in other countries. So there's a lot of times where I was just by myself.
Yeah.
And so really relying on community to raise me, I guess. Yeah.
Were your siblings like not like help, like raising you, like not like, were they, are they just there?
They were there until they, you know, had to live their own lives. Yeah, exactly. So when I was about eight, my sister moved to Illinois for college and then my brother around that time moved to New York. So yeah, just solo little Sarah, but learned how important it is to build that community and have community in place. And just knowing that there is a diversity in how people grow up. And so for me, it was like my uncle picking me up, sometimes my mom's coworkers. Yeah, just really understanding that not everyone's family looks the same.
Right.
And so, yeah, that was huge for me growing up.
Like, imagine your experience has to be, I mean, it's so different because like your parents are, they're driven to succeed because like they're trying, they left their country to come to America to like make a better life. And this is how they found a better life. And like, a lot of people would maybe resent that or be like, where, like, where were you when I was growing up? But like, I imagine it's so much different for a child of immigrants when they're like, like this is what you, this is how people succeed, right? What, what was, like, what was that like?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah. Definitely a lot of therapy to figure that out. Cause yeah, growing up in the US, it's such a different culture, right? Where it's very nuclear family oriented, very like, you know, heteronormative, where you have this American dream, family looks, you know, a certain way. And so since my life didn't look like that, I think I held a lot of resentment as a child and kind of figuring out what my in-between life was, you know, living in a family where our culture was very Indian and then being a child in the US. Trying to like reconcile like what that all meant. So for me, I think as I've gotten older, it's realizing that my experience has just made me a stronger person. And I think being more understanding that not everybody has the same upbringing and also knowing that the immigrant experience is unique.
Yeah.
And beautiful and difficult and all those things and that we, I don't know, that like, we are a nation of immigrants and we need to remember that, especially in like today's day.
My son, Link, he, we were driving home one day and, oh, I had just saw One Battle After Another. And he had asked me like, what was that, what was the movie about? And I was like, I don't, I can't really get into the whole thing, but it, I mean, it has a lot to do with people that are fighting against ICE and, and they're, you know, it's very, but he was asking me about, are immigrants bad people? Are they, are they criminals? And I was like, absolutely not. They're absolutely not criminals. America was founded on immigrants, like coming here, the live a better life. And the more we can remember that, like, the, I feel like, I feel like the better we will be for other people that are coming here. Like, and, and he was, it was very, not a difficult conversation now with them, because I feel like it's a very, a human thing to like ask that. But like, and he's hearing all this stuff, but I'm, but that's what's kind of being told to the kids right now is that immigrants and are, are scary. And it's, it's not like that at all. Like it's exactly the opposite. And especially in Spokane, like it's, there's a, I mean, I'm not sure what the, I mean, I'm sure you know, the numbers, but there's, there's a lot of immigrants here and there's a lot of refugees here. And, and so I, so like your experience with that and like coming to Spokane, like, how has it been like being a brown person in Spokane and, and seeing that?
Absolutely. Definitely. When I moved up here, the first year, I had like reverse culture shock or like whatever kind of, or just culture shock, because I went from being, you know, one of many to being the only one in a classroom. So meeting a lot of people who, you know, had good intentions, I imagine, but would ask pretty ignorant questions. And so part of it, I think, was just understanding like, whoa, like there's some of us who grew up around people who are different than us. Around a lot of diversity, around different languages, and there are people here in this classroom who didn't. And who are, you know, holding on to things that maybe they heard growing up. And so I think also holding some grace for people who maybe were just replicating things our parents had said or whatever, especially as freshmen in college are really like deconstructing a lot. So part of it was also learning how to be patient with people. And also just finding community that does get it was really helpful. So you don't feel so isolated and alone.
Yeah.
So at first at Whitworth, I was like, do I transfer? Like, how do I kind of deal with this dynamic?
Yeah.
But once I found people who, you know, were also cultural, people who were, you know, child of immigrants, people who had marginalized identities, we were able to be that support system for one another, especially for me being so far from home.
Yeah.
It was really helpful. And I think Whitworth was a place where I could build those relationships and we really had each other's backs. And so being, you know, brown in Spokane is a different experience for everyone, but I think for me, it was finding community that really kept me here and make, and it made me feel like Spokane could be my home.
Where was like somewhere like early on in Spokane, you're like, this feels like home. Was there a place or is it just like, or is it just like your dorm room? Like where, like was like going out in Spokane, like finding your community? I feel like there's little places that like mean something to everyone, like in different ways, but like, was there one place that like really felt like home?
That's a good question. I, I mean, for the majority of campus life, you know, for the first two years, they require you to live on campus. For that, it was mostly like, you know, dorm room hangouts and things like that. But I think the first time it felt really like home was like being able to, actually now I'm like thinking about it. That's a good question. I don't know if I've ever thought about that. I think like for me, where I felt comfort was just around friends.
Yeah.
And around like stu-, like faculty and staff who also got it. So, you know, there'd be spaces in, on campus where a lot of those students and staff would hang out. And I think that felt really helpful or just like, you know, you don't have to put on a face or, you know, pretend to be anyone else than yourself. And I think it was through those relationships where home started being more about the people.
Yeah.
And less about like a physical space.
That's so, like, I, I talked to my wife about this a lot is like, I love my family. Like my family's great. We all live in Spokane and I would do anything for my family. But like, there's a time where like, even having your family so close, like I do, like, you start finding people that like feel more at home than like sometimes your family does. And like you just like, you really, and we, and it's always, and that's like a great thing about being human and about growing up and becoming adults, that you find people that are like-minded and really help you grow. Like, and that's, it's very powerful. I think that's, that's awesome. Well, I'm gonna keep that like favorite places around Spokane going. I want to play, it's not a game, but it's like kind of talking about our, your favorite places around Spokane. If you want to keep it in District One, you can, but I, I'd love to know like, what's your favorite late night hangout?
Yeah, I guess it depends on the activity.
But is there, is there any late night hangouts anymore in Spokane?
Yeah, I don't know if there's necessarily any that aren't like dancing related or concert related or getting drinks related. So.
There's like, there's no, there's no coffee shops anymore that are like open late night. I mean, there's a couple, I think, but like, there's nothing like open like late, late night. We used to have a lot of places in Spokane that like were open till midnight or one o'clock that were just like coffee spots.
I know Lunarium on Monroe is a spot for a lot of folks. And sometimes if I'm like, I don't want to go get a drink, but I want to hang out with this person, talk, it's a really great option. Cause it's like tea and coffee. But yeah, I think for me, still figuring that out, maybe, maybe we need to start one.
Yeah, maybe we do. I, I don't know why I started on that question. Favorite event?
Ooh, I have a lot. Okay. Maybe I'll, okay. I think, you know, the Terrain event that just happened last week is a fan fave of mine. I think because it highlights our local artists and I think it's really cool being able to like see our work on display like that. And I think for people who are like, maybe don't identify as artists full-time, but maybe, you know, you work with them.
Yeah.
But this is like a cool way of getting to know them because you see their art on the wall. Or you see people performing aerialist performances, or you see people like reciting poetry or a band playing out back. I think of the mixture of all the different types of art is really compelling too.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I just think it's a really fun event and it's really popular and you also get to run into a lot of friends and.
I gotta imagine for you going to like Terrain is like, it's non-stop like saying hi to people and having conversations all night long.
I imagine it's the same for you. I think like, once you're in Spokane, it really feels like a big, small town.
Yeah.
And I think that's what I really love about it is that you can go basically anywhere and you will likely run into someone.
That's what's, I think what I love about the arts community is like, it's, it's very, it's very diverse and very big. But like you go to something and you still just, I, there's so many people you get to meet and then like, and get to know. But then you start seeing them all over the place after you get to know them. It's really, really cool.
Yeah.
Hidden gem that many people don't know about.
I feel like it depends on your listenership. I think one that maybe folks are starting to like know is on the map. I really love what's happening in Hilliard with the Creative Arts District and specifically with the United Building.
Yeah.
So kind of like a District One, I guess downtown is also District One. So maybe more Hilliard version of the Saranet Commons that we have downtown.
Yeah.
So it has, you know, different shops in there. It has, you know, Bellwether's second location, has a really great coffee shop. Derailleur has crazy trains. So it has great food and then upstairs has, you know, gaming space for that community. So people who play D and D and Magic and all those other like collaborative games go and hang out upstairs. And there's a vintage toy store, I believe as well. But I think more examples of those like multi-use spaces I really love.
It's a really cool spot.
It is really cool.
I have a lot of, I have a lot of listeners in District One, so.
So I think the United Building is, you know, a hidden gem for us.
And even if you don't live, if you live in Spokane, go check out like the, the United Building. Yeah, it's, it's so, it's really, really cool in there. And all of Hilliard, it's just, it's very starting, it feels very vibrant and like Kismet is a, a great restaurant that's in there and Bad Seed and there's multiple other places in there. It's just like to see it grow and. just like to see it grow and, and start thriving is, is really, really cool. Best thrift shop, spot, thrift shop, spot?
I have to say Global Neighborhood. Um, thankfully a District One business, but even if it wasn't, would love it. Um, also Whitworth alum. So that's pretty cool. Um, but I think kind of the mixture between doing a business and a public good. They do a great example of that and doing job training for folks who are refugees and immigrants. Amazing. And, you know, a fun fact of my campaign is trying to be more sustainable. So all of our shirts are thrifted from Global that we then printed on.
Oh, wow. That's awesome.
So wanted to do something different and like, you know, being an organizer for so long, you see a lot of campaigns and there's just a lot of waste created. Um, so really wanted to do something that, you know, gave business to a District One business. So Global Neighborhood and then using a local printer, Chris from Corporat. Shout out.
I was gonna ask.
He printed on them.
When you, is this, is this corporate? Yeah, I was gonna say this looks like corporate. And I was like, this looks like Chris Martin.
Exactly. Yeah. So he's been really great in doing all of the funky things I wanted to do.
That's awesome. Uh, we're going to switch to like food a little bit. Favorite brunch spot?
Inland Pacific Kitchen. IPK. Also a hidden gem, I'd probably say as well for some reason. Um, but yeah, IPK has the best brunch.
So many times it's been brought up here on here and I've still haven't gone. I needed to just go. Probably because I have, I mean, I can take my kids anywhere and they could go there. I just, we just have not ventured to there for brunch with them. I, maybe I should find a morning where I could just take my wife, but we need to go there.
You gotta. Best espresso martini in town.
Oh, wow. Okay. Good to know. I, my wife loves espresso. I mean, I love espresso martini. Uh, pizza?
I am a sucker for a thin crust. But this would be like more of like a traditional, I guess, crust size, but I love South Bay area pizza.
It's really good.
Yeah. Their hot honey pizza is like the love of my life.
Haven't had it in forever. That's such a good pizza.
Yeah. So that's my favorite. And yeah.
We kind of talked about like coffee shop you love. We already said, we kind of talked about Derailleur, but anywhere else. I don't know if that's your favorite, but it's.
I love our coffee shops in Spokane. Um, so the ones that I often have in rotation are Derailleur. So District One and Hilliard, Hatch downtown on Main Street and Saranac Commons. Um, and I love New Love. So they're located, the one I go to the most is the Kendall Yards one, because I love that it's on the trail. You get a gorgeous view of downtown and they have a lot of windows. So. It feels very open.
That's a really cool spot. I, they've sponsored a podcast I produced like last year and I went in there a couple of times, like get coffee and take some photos. And there's just so many people hanging out there. I was just like, this is like what it's like to go, like what it felt like to go to a coffee shop back in, you know, the mid 2000s where like everyone was just like doing work and in a coffee shop. And that's what it felt like there. I was, I was like, this is awesome. Um, that's, that's cool. Um, well, that's all for the Spokast hot list for right now. Um, we might get some, to some more questions, but, uh, I want to get into your, your council run in District One. Uh, and, and but the first, how I want to start it off is just like, can you, for those unfamiliar, like what are the boundaries of District One?
I gave you this beautiful sticker. Um, so this was designed by one of my good friends, Chad Koontz, who is a graphic designer and he and I worked together at Plain Parenthood. Um, and I knew he would get the vibe, the vision, because I wanted to run a campaign that was fun and not just the typical red, white and blue that you see a lot. Um, but something that really reflected the diversity of our district and of our city. So if you want to zoom in, maybe one day. It is of District One. So basically it's the majority of downtown and then northeast. So division.
Division is the, the line.
Yeah. Being the center line, everything east of that. So we have, you know, like the classics, like the Logan neighborhood with Gonzaga. We have Chief Gary Park with SEC. So we have some of the, you know, colleges and universities and then downtown with, you know, WSU and the other schools. Um, and it goes all the way up to Shiloh Hills. So just shy of Whitworth. Um, but yeah, so it's a big area and I really love it. And some of the fun facts about this little map sticker is, can you tell of the little characters on what they might be? Some of there's just like cutesy stuff, but.
Man, now I'm, I want, well, I, I see the eagle like that's on the river that I always see driving down Upriver Drive.
Now I'm quizzing.
No, you are. I wanna, is it, uh, is it the elementary schools?
Yeah, they're mascots.
Oh, cool.
For a lot of the schools in the area, because, you know, people in Spokane really love their like school pride. And it's very like, people have, you know, rivalries and stuff. So it has, you know, the Pirate for Rogers, has Sasquatch for SEC, has a Bulldog for GU and some of the like elementary schools, like you said. So it was a cute little thing to highlight.
That's awesome. That's really cool. Uh, and that's a humongous district. For those who don't know, there's three districts in Spokane, right? Uh, and I mean, and it's just, yeah, I, I vote, I, when I looked at it earlier today, I, I've looked at the district's map, maps a lot and I, and I looked at it, I was like, oh, I'm like literally a block from being in District One. Uh, and yeah, I'm in uncorporated Spokane County. So I vote for commissioners and I don't, I, I don't, I'm not sure what I vote for. I know I vote, I vote, but I just like, I.
Like county commissioners and school district?
School district, yeah. Yeah. I don't, is there a council for my, for the county? I don't know.
County commissioners.
Oh, county commissioners. They are the, they're, they're like the council members. Got it. Uh, but I don't vote for a mayor or anything like that. It's kind of boring. Like, I, I was like, actually like, I was like, kind of hoping I lived in Millwood like proper. So I could like, if I ever wanted to make a run for like government, that I could like have, be a part of like a small little city of Millwood. I mean, I could still run someday if I choose to, but I don't, I don't have as much like, uh, passion for like the, the county as I do like for the city. Like, uh, maybe someday I'll just move back and then I can run.
Yeah, you just move a block over.
What was a moment you knew you were gonna run for city council?
I think people around me knew a lot sooner than I did. Um, being an organizer, you're in the spaces of politics a lot. You're on the outside and pushing people into office or pushing them on issues and getting them to understand the importance of different things. So for so long, that being my life felt like where I was gonna stay. Um, but I think a lot of people saw in me a, an ability to run for office. And for a long time for me, it was like, just because I could doesn't mean I should or will or whatever. Um, but this election season and also just in the past few years, you know, seeing the extremism federally and also in other places of politics, it really is like if not you, who type of thing. And I think being inspired by folks who are like young, running for office and trying to change the status quo was really inspiring to me. Um, and seeing how, you know, regardless of your background, you know, AOC being a bartender, um, Maxwell Frost being, you know, a young Gen Z kid, um, just seeing how it's not just people who have been lawyers who are then going into office, but people with real life experience. And so for me, it was seeing all of those people step up in that way and seeing how I could step up for our community and believing that my love of Spokane could really translate into council, because I think loving our city is really important if you're going to represent it and try to make it better. Um, so for me, it was really hearing from people that they wanted me to run and finding it within myself that I did want to show up for my community in this way. So it was a, a more recent decision.
Well, yeah, like you, you have to submit by what time? Like is it May?
Early May.
And were you, were you a late addition or did you, yeah, what like, yeah, that's a question, I guess.
I had probably started talking about it starting in February or March.
Was there somebody that told you like, you should do it? Like, and that was like, I'm gonna do it now?
There, there were quite a few people. Um, I don't know necessarily if there's a single, actually, my treasurer, which is funny, because a lot of people don't necessarily think about all the positions you have to have on your run for office, but the most important is your treasurer, making sure you're not doing anything illegal and reporting things on time. Um, shout out Jeff. And he, you know, a lot of people who really know me really well, know, you know, my passion for different things. So they were very like, you know, if you want to do this, you're gonna do it and do it great. Um, but didn't necessarily say like, you should do this because I, you know, they know I'm swayed by, like people who I really respect, like telling me like, you should do this. And they didn't want me to like make a decision I was gonna hate. Um, but I think when Jeff, my treasurer, gave me a phone call, um, and he was just like, hey, I heard you might be running. Um, I think you should do it because like, I'm really inspired by what you're saying. And I think it's needed right now. And I haven't felt, you know, this type of inspiration for, um, someone running since our last progressive person ran for District One, um, and one. So Kate Burke being that person. And I think someone who's like seen multiple candidates and has been in kind of like the background observing, having his perspective of seeing something special about this race made me feel like, okay, someone who like knows what they're talking about in terms of like campaign policies and money and blah, blah, blah. Um, saying that they see something special about like the values I have and about the race I want to run. Um, believing in that made me feel like, okay, I'm gonna do this.
Was there something specific like in your district where you're like, this needs to change? And that like was kind of a catalyst too for wanting to run? Was there any one thing that happened?
I think a mixture of things. Um, my opponent is pretty extreme in his beliefs. Um, so he's a big MAGA Republican. Um, is, I think self-identifies as a Christian nationalist. So I think right now when we're seeing a lot of that activity happening. It really was like spurring me into making sure, like we give people an op-, option, because democracy only works if you're given options. And, you know, we wanted to make sure there was someone who could give that option to people. And, yeah, I think once downtown was added to the district, that was a big push for me too, because I love our downtown and I know like, you know, there are issues that people bring up about it and valid, we can talk about that. Um, but I think really loving our businesses downtown, really loving the people and the culture and the neighborhood that it is, and seeing how my opponent talks about it, very, very different. Very different. And so that really spurred me too of being like, no, like we love our city and like we love our district and we love downtown. So really trying to make sure that there was that kind of caring aspect to running for office. And I, that really spurred me. And then also like knowing that our district has specific needs and knowing that no one was representing those needs.
Right. Yeah. When I was like looking at your, the district and I was like, and it, when you look at any council, I'm sure this is nationwide, but like, it's two white guys and like, and I know that's probably the majority of the district, but like, there's still people within your district that like deserve representation and like, and for those who don't know, council members are supposed to be nonpartisan. And very nonpartisan. And when I feel like, and I'll, I'll just say this for myself, when council members are specifically only on one side of things, it, it's hard to represent people who don't share those values at all. And having two people that are like that in the same district, this is a change that needs to happen. And there needs to be, there needs to be representation and there needs to be bipartisanship, right? Like, I don't know if that, and I don't really know a ton about politics. I was gonna actually, I should have led the podcast with this. You're the first politician I've ever interviewed, or, and I shouldn't say you're a politician. I mean, you are a candidate. You're the first candidate I ever interviewed on, on Spokast too.
That's an honor. Thank you.
And I, I don't know what, what spurred me to be like, I think April had reached out to me and I'm like, I have to have, I have to have this conversation because, oh, it was, it was what transpired with the, the Charlie Kirk situation and the whole, the, the conversation, how, the focus of how it's gone from everyone like can now just speak rhetoric and to say the most awful things in public forums now. And we need change in Spokane.
Yeah. And I think, you know, having these conversations is really important in accessible ways. So there might be people who listen to this podcast who don't necessarily, you know, read the spokesman or people who watch Creme Two News or like whatever. So I think approaching this in a really accessible manner has been really important to me. Um, because I think, you know, you know, you said it a few times where you're like, I don't know anything about politics, when it's like, you are a person, you're a human living in this community. You talk to people all the time. I think that is what makes you qualified to talk about this. It's just if you live in our community and you talk to people, because politics shouldn't be something that is so inaccessible for our everyday people, because that's what politics and government is for.
Right.
For the people. And so I think that's gotten really lost in, you know, all the partisanship and fighting and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah. What, what do you like? How has that been? Like the, like there should be discourse and there should be conversations with, across both sides, like, but do you find that it's become, that's become difficult?
I think at times it's become difficult if it feels like there's not mutual respect, or if there's not like ground rules of engagement. So if you know you will be safe in an environment to have conversations, I think that's great. Especially as a, you know, brown woman, brown queer woman, it's important to like know that if I'm walking into a space to have a conversation, that I'll be safe, because we know political violence has always existed for communities that I belong to. Um, but just last weekend, I participated in a town hall and it has gotten like a lot of heat because of the different organizations that were putting it on. Um, but it was open to the public. So I knew, because it was a public forum and I was being asked to be there, that I was gonna be there, because I've wanted to run an accessible campaign and show up when people have asked. So that was part of my value. And there are people there across the aisle. There were people who were staunch, you know, democratic socialists. And then there were people there who were wearing MAGA hats. So everyone was in the room and being able to talk about my values in a space like that was really great. It was at the public library. And then also giving time for Q and A. So people in the crowd got to ask me questions and that included people who are very much on the opposite side of things than me. Um, but even afterwards, those people came up to me and they said, you know, thank you for being willing to talk to me and like have this conversation and being accessible. Um, and I think that is what is needed is because a lot of the times in politics and when we're making decisions and blah, 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 when people don't feel included in that process and very blindsided, like that's where a lot of the like distrust and like anger comes from. But I feel like if people are involved in the why behind things and feel like their opinion is being heard, I think, like, I believe local government is where we should be doing that, because it's where we have the most access to our elected leaders.
Definitely.
And so I think that was a really good example for me of how I want to lead in being someone who regardless of your belief system, I'm gonna listen to you and like give you that time and attention, because you deserve that respect as much as I deserve that respect. And I think that town hall last week was a good example of that.
Yeah. I, I need to maybe, maybe probably need to read something about it, like. Okay, perfect. Cause I, uh, I, I saw a couple of things. I specifically saw something, a post from your.
My opponent?
Your opponent that was like, I saw it. I was like, what he was saying about someone that was sponsoring the event. I was just like, is this true? Is this like, and I, I feel like the, his, there was just a lot of negativity and I just like, it was very, just a sad thing to see. I'm just, and I feel like I'm seeing a lot of that from specifically MAGA politicians. So just a lot of just misinformation.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they spread it and then they're trying to say followers, but not followers. They're.
They're supporters.
They're supporters. Like they, they believe it and they, and so, uh, and I, I don't know if we, if it matters what it was, but.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's why people who are in elected office, people who are community leaders, they need to treat their platform with respect and also know that like, people are gonna listen to you because you're an authority figure. And you can't just say like, things that folks will believe and it might cause like, you know, a lot more division, it might cause anger, it might cause, um, just misinformation being proliferated throughout our city. And we need to make sure we're grounded in like facts and evidence. And yeah, he does love to talk about me on Facebook.
Yeah, he does. He does. He does spend a lot of time on Facebook. Well, that's, that's a good transition to the, this next question is like, you center your campaign around the ABCs, like the accountability, belonging in the community. What do those values look like What do those values look like in action in a neighborhood level or in a district level?
Absolutely. We, you know, when I was coming up with campaign values and making sure they were accessible, I really wanted it to be something simple that people could remember. So that's why I just ABC. So accountability being really important because a lot of people make many promises on the campaign trail. And there's not follow through. And I really want to be careful when I'm talking to people that I'm not promising, you know, the moon. That is something I can't guarantee them, right? So wanting to make sure people know what they can expect from me is important and making sure I'm accountable to the voters. So if they're like, you said this, like, why aren't you doing it? Being able to say like, here's where we are in the process, right? And like being that person who understands who I'm accountable to, where it's not like the people who are the wealthiest in our city and it's not the developers. Like I am accountable to the people and I want, you know, voters to know that. So that being a big thing through like accessibility, making sure I'm going to the community versus like expecting them to come to me. So I've tried to do that through my campaign by being in coffee shops and doing coffee chats and doing park parties and just like letting people know that like I'm here and I'm accountable to you. Like come ask me any questions. So that, that has been how I've wanted that to go for the campaign, which has been going really well and how I would want to lead as a council member. And then belonging because, you know, our city motto.
Man, I should know this. I've looked it up many times.
It used to be near nature and near perfect.
It used to be near, yeah.
There's a new one.
It's not the city of choice, is it?
That is a part of our history.
What is it? I forget.
No, it's okay. In Spokane, we all belong.
Oh, thank you. I had a, I actually did a quiz at a thing and I was like, what is the city motto? And that was it. I should remember that.
That's okay. But if that is the intention of our city, right? To be a place where everybody belongs, we need to follow that up. Action and policy to protect people. So wanting to make sure that belonging is regardless of your income, you belong here. So we have affordable housing, we have transit that you can rely on. We have streets that you can get around with and not be harmed and killed because we have a lot of traffic violence in the city. And so making sure that people can be on bikes and walking and scootering and driving and whatever, and we can share our streets. So that belonging in that capacity, making sure, you know, people who are immigrants belong here, people who are queer and trans and across the gender spectrum and all those things. So the belonging really being important through how our council shows up for our communities that are all very diverse and different. And then community being the C because you know, whether it's community safety, whether it's our neighborhoods, we need to build that community connection, you know, and there's a lot of distrust and just like safety in general, there's a lot of like suspicion, you know? And so wanting to make sure we have a community approach with all of the policy we're making. Having those town hall forums so that people can share what their thoughts are. And making sure that we're listening to our neighbors when they're sharing, there's an issue. So throughout the campaign, it's been through knocking on doors. So been putting a lot of miles in this past few months.
Have you been keeping track?
I probably have on my watch. I'll do some math. Yeah. But it's been really important to hear, you know, when neighbors tell me I'm on a fixed income and I can't afford this rent if it keeps going up because I only have so much money. Or when people are like, down our street, it just stops being paved. And then we as neighbors have to chip in together to pay for that to be like watered down so that there's not dust flying in the air. Or this intersection is really unsafe and I feel like I can't like walk my dog here. Like all of those are experiences we're hearing from neighbors and community members. So making sure our solutions are community based is really important to me and something that, you know, I'm taking notes when we're knocking on doors, making sure all of our canvassers know to take really good notes because we don't want people to feel like, oh, she talked to me once and never heard anything else, you know? So wanting to make sure we are treating people with that like respect, like I said earlier and yeah, just making sure the community is at the forefront of what we're doing.
Well, yeah, I mean, building community, I feel like when I moved here to Spokane and like, I mean, I totally have not don't really remember it, but I just feel like there was a, where I grew up, like in, I grew up in North Spokane and Meade and like everyone just kind of came together and like we, and it, and it's, I feel like as I've grown up, I used to live over in Nautabon District. And then now I live in Millwood and it's just like, I think everyone kind of feels apart. And it's, and I don't know if that's, it's probably technology that this kind of separates us. And we just don't, we don't get out from behind our screens as much as we used to. Like I was in Seattle this summer. My, my sister-in-law lives up in, I forget what she was like, North, North Seattle, but they have all these blocks and they were having block parties all over Seattle. And I was like, man, I, and it was organized by like the city government and I, and I was like, I would love to see more of this in Spokane where like neighbors come together to like, you know, industry and like just have, you know, a potluck and just like kind of meet people where they are. And like, it doesn't have to be about anything other than like the saying hi to your neighbor. I just feel like there was something lost there. And I feel like, and I feel like there's, there still is that. And I feel like especially in your district, there's, it's so far and wide, but like, there's so much opportunity to like get to know your neighbors that like they're, I'd love to see more of that.
Absolutely. Me too. We were, or I was invited at the last Artist in Action I did, someone came up to me and he was like, we're having a like neighborhood party tomorrow. Like if you want to come by, like we'd love that. And so I showed up and he was like, whoa, I didn't expect you to show up. And I was like, of course, like we're invited, we're gonna go. And it was just so funny. It was just like a bunch of neighbors hanging out in this person's yard. There were like literal pigs that the guy had and people were just like hanging out, drinking their white glasses, like barbecuing. It was very like community block party vibe. And it was just neighbors. Just all hanging out at this guy's house. And I think that was really special to me to be invited in that space because I'm like, I'm, don't live exactly here, but for you to think like, I am someone that you would want in this space is really great. And knowing that, I don't know, that your council member will show up, I think is important. But yeah, love having block parties and just having more like examples of community engagement and community getting to get together.
How, I mean, that's super, like a council member to feel approachable and be able to like show up for your, your residents when you're, when you can be, right?
Yeah, exactly.
So you, you love downtown. You've mentioned that earlier. I, I'd love to know like, what is your, your vision for like the downtown's future? And like what, if you could like wave a magic wand, what was, be something that you could do right now to like make it better?
Absolutely. So I, you know, magic wand would love to, you know, shut down some streets and make them pedestrian only and having, you know, different vendors being able to like pop up on a Saturday, Friday night, you know, we know Vern with his hot dogs will like pop up around town, but knowing like, oh, we'll have food trucks here. Would be really great. And being able to know like, you know, you can walk around downtown without, you know, cars dipping by and things like that. I think having a more walkable downtown would be really great. So I'd be part of it. I think for me personally, I love our Skywalks. And before the pandemic, there are so many businesses and just spaces in our Skywalks. And I would really love to see that happen again and have a revitalization of our Skywalk system. And I think that could be really good incubation spaces for people who are starting out a business because it can be cheaper. You don't have to, you know, pay a huge lease for a space. So I would love to see that.
That'd be great. I grew up in, when I grew up in Spokane, the downtown Skywalks were like, because the River Park Square didn't exist how it does today. And so everywhere you just walked across the Skywalks and you would go from like the Macy's building to like another building. And like there'd be just like, just a ton of businesses up there and and really you can still walk, I mean, I can still walk from like the Paulson Building all the way to River Park Square through Skywalks, but it's dead. And like, it would be so cool to see that, like just have businesses in all those spaces. That would, that would be great.
Yeah. So I would really love to see that. And we know when people are concerned about like safety downtown, we know one of the biggest measures is just having more people around, you know? And so activating our spaces downtown, making sure we have programming, making sure, you know, folks are having their basic needs met. I think it's a multi-pronged approach. We can't just throw all of our eggs in one basket and say having a hundred more cups will be our solution. It has to be a, like a multi approach. And I think, you know, what we're seeing downtown right now is actually like more businesses going downtown and, you know, businesses who have existed downtown, the things that they've said are their difficulties is around the cost of goods because of what's happening with tariffs and the cost of rent because, you know, things just continue to get more expensive. And so I think also addressing those needs that businesses are having would help.
Is there something immediate, immediate you'd like to put in action once, if you were to win? Is there anything like, yeah, is that how it works? Can you just like, when I, when I, when you win, like I'm gonna do this?
Yeah. I mean, I think one of the things we'll definitely be looking at, like how expensive is it to do the Skywalk thing? And like, how do we create a program? Cause we know we have Spokane Arts is now a part of the city again. So you know, is it having like artists have like little pop-ups every so often? Maybe it's having, you know, an incentivizing program where, you know, if someone builds a business in there, it's for cheaper. I think, you know, there are things we can look at in terms of our planning and seeing the permitting process and seeing what we can do because I think that would be really cool.
That would be really cool. It'd be really cool to see like that active again. We're kind of ending up, ending here, but like what is the experience of running been like for you as, as a young, as a, a young woman of color, queer, like, like, how has it been?
It's actually been pretty cool. Like it's definitely tiring. It takes a lot of time and energy and there's a lot being asked of you, but I think if you are really strong in your values and belief system, you can stand strong in that. So that's been really important to me is not losing myself in running. And I think as someone who's young, brown, queer woman, I've had a lot of people come up to me and say like, they're really excited and they feel really represented just by having me run because you know, maybe they identify in one of the communities I do and seeing someone who looks like them, someone who's like lived the experience they've lived, running for office is really exciting. And even just yesterday, we had a debate at North Central High School and just having these teens being like, can I take a picture with you? Like I love your tattoos or like, you know, just like these cute little things, but them being like excited about local politics. I think that has been like the most special part for me has been getting to talk to people and hear their stories and hear why they're excited about our campaign, about the values we have because it's all for me, common sense in the sense of, you know, we all want the same thing. You know, we all want housing, we all want food, we all want clean air, clean water. We just disagree on how we get there. But I think remaining grounded in those values has been really helpful for me to like know my North Star. And running has been a really great example of how we double down on those values and explain to people why they're not controversial. They're not extreme. They're not radical. And this is what the community wants. And so it's been a good experience and I have really loved getting to do it in a different manner and make it more fun. And I think young people and folks who are maybe less like traditional have really loved seeing that. And so I'm really happy about it.
That's awesome. Yeah. I feel like when I, when I see people run in Spokane, like it, I haven't, it's like, no one's ever really excited me like how seen, like in, I'm trying to think back of like anyone that's like really excited me for city council. And like, it's really cool to see, see you running and like a, it's really, and like I, my last podcast with executive director of the NWACP, Dr. Melissa Mace, like, you know, talking to her about being a black woman that's a doctor, like, and how much representation matters. Like it does, it matters so much. And like, especially for young people to know, like, I could run too, like someday, like it doesn't have to just be, you know, middle-aged white men. Like we, we need, we need more, we need a youth movement in our, in our local politics. Like it doesn't need to be ran by the old people, like.
Yeah. And I think it's like, just knowing that age shouldn't be like the determining factor for why someone's qualified. I think we assume like, oh, this person has lived X amount of years, they must know a lot about what people experience, but we know that that's not like quite the correlation causation that we think it is. And I think.
If that's an issue that people are bringing up right now, like, I mean, you're 28, like Bingo was only like 35 when he ran.
He ran for mayor first in 2019.
Yeah, like it wasn't, I mean, if anyone's using that like example, like that's bullshit because he was also young when he was running originally. I mean, he's only 38, he's still young. So I lost my train of thought. But no, it's, it's so important and I, I love what you're doing. I you, you also have an event that's coming up soon, Artist in Action, Part Two.
Part Two. Yeah. A lot of people really love the first one. So been trying to figure out how to get one in right, you know, before the election, which is coming up, which is wild. So partnering with my friends at Placeholder Studios, which is a District One business, organization, business? I don't really know how we're qualified, but or categorized, but they're doing a Halloween show. And so my campaign is hopping on as one of the sponsors and, you know, collaborators on the event. So it's gonna be an Artist in Action Part Two Halloween edition.
What's the dates?
It'll be Halloween.
It's a Friday night. That, that I was like, that is, makes Halloween a lot different this year. It being on a Friday night on a.
Not like a Tuesday and you go trick or treating with your kids. And then you're like, well.
Yeah. Now I'm just gonna be out on a Friday night with my kids. But no, that's all like, the first one was organized like kind of with Alan Stone.
So it was, so because of placeholder actually. So Alan has joined, is part of the team at Placeholder Studios. I think that's a creative director or something.
That sounds right. Yeah.
Yeah. But I am a friend of Justin Fricks and have worked on a lot of the sets and just helped with like painting stuff or being just like a production assistant, I guess, just volunteering my time because I love what he's doing and I believe in it. And so that's how I got to know Alan Stone and, you know, I shot my shot one day and I was like, I feel like we're friends now. And I was like, what would be the chance that you would want to do a community concert? And he was so down. It was really great. And, you know, I love the Bedheads and I love Beacon the Velvet and they all wanted to join too. And they all donated their time. It was so kind and The Chameleon also, and you know, Josh and Cam were very generous with that, like setting it up there and just really wanting it to be a fun event that really highlights how cool Spokane is and how art and politics are connected. And they're not like, you know, diametrically opposed or anything. And had Connor doing tattoos. It was just like a really fun.
That's cool. Do you, do you know who's on the bill this time?
Yeah, it should be, there's a list. But I know for sure Time Worm. Believe the Bedheads are doing it again. Itchy Kitty. Fourth one that I cannot remember. I'm so sorry. I'd have to pull up my phone, but.
Say it all at the beginning of the show too. Like, so you've already heard who's, who's on there. What can people do right now to help support you?
Yeah. So ballots come out so soon, next week.
And they're probably out now, now, now that this podcast comes out after ballots have came out, but yeah.
Ballots are in your mailbox or on your dining table. So making sure you fill that out sooner is better. And I am a procrastinator voter.
Me too.
I think people assume like, I'm a bad voter if I wait. And it's like, a lot of people do that. But the reason why we need people to vote early this year is because of the cuts to our postal service from the Trump administration and the government shutdown. It's likely that if you put your ballot in the mail close to the election, it might not get postmarked in time. So basically it means that if you put it in the mailbox, the post office might not have the time to stamp it saying it did get in before Tuesday, November 4th at 8:00 PM. Tuesday, November 4th at 8:00 PM. So that means people's vote won't count. So we're really encouraging people that if you wanna mail in your vote, to put it in your mailbox as soon as possible. But if you are someone who takes longer to use a ballot box, so our elections office on their website has a list of all the ballot boxes. But what's helpful to remember is that it's at your local library.
Yep.
All of our local libraries have them. So dropping off your ballot in a ballot box is a for sure way of making sure your ballot will be counted. So.
That's awesome. Any, any other way people can support you right now too?
Join or come to Artist in Action, part two. Follow along on social media, Sarah4Spokane. That's also our website. If you want to come knock on doors, we'll basically be doing that until the last second. So come knock on doors with me. Come call people with me. You know, you call them and you say, hey, I'm supporting Sarah, your city council. Can we count on your vote? Pretty easy script. We do it together, not too scary. Um, so basically just helping us get the word out.
Yeah.
So if you know someone who lives in district one, which we'll make sure we're linked to on the podcast, tell them to vote for me.
Yeah.
If they believe in progress for the people, I'm your gal.
You've been talking a lot. So how, how do you, how do you like maintain your voice? Like, like you've been drinking a lot of tea?
You know, I have been starting my day with some black tea, but I don't think that, does that have properties that help your throat?
I don't know. I don't, I don't know if tea actually, like, I just know that I, I know sugar is not good for your, like anything, like you're just for the, like maybe like throat coats, like type of tea. I don't know.
Drink a lot of water, right? Maybe just when I'm home, I'm just silent.
Yeah, that I would imagine.
Don't talk.
You just, you just go into like a deprivation, deprivation like chamber where like it's just like, it's the silence.
I think that is actually what I do. Maybe like I haven't noticed it, but I think once I'm home, I'm just like quiet, do my little scroll. Maybe watch some trash TV and just like power down for the day.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause it has been a lot of talking and you know, we have debates left and right. So depending on when this comes out, we likely will have another debate or forum or something. So come say hi.
Yeah.
Yeah. Because basically just getting the word out is huge because it's a not a presidential election year. It's not a mayoral election year. So turnout is lower on years like this. So we really just need people who believe in Spokane to get out their vote.
Get out there, get out there and vote, vote early. Don't be procrastinating or go put it in the, in the ballot box. I'm, well, I'm excited. I would, uh, you have my endorsement. Is that a thing?
Thank you. That's so nice.
So I, I, I think what you're doing in Spokane is really cool. And I, there's so much more to talk about, but I'm, I know you have many things to go do. And I, I'll keep it at this last question, which is, I've asked on Spokast for a really long time, is why Spokane?
Spokane is a special community that I love dearly. It has been a place where I have felt like I've grown as a person, where I've learned how to use my voice, how I've learned how to do movement work. And it's a place where you can really get involved like fairly easily, which I think is really special. I think in larger cities or cities where they're much more like image based, maybe, um, you have to jump through a lot of hoops. Maybe have a specific type of resume, know someone to get to someone else. But here, you know, you should be able to find, you know, Mayor Brown at a coffee shop.
Right.
You can find me basically anywhere in town, at a concert, at a bar, wherever. Um, and I think that accessibility piece is huge. Um, and I think it's really special that Spokane is a place where you can get involved. You can have your voice heard and it doesn't require you to be anyone but yourself. And I believe our community really cares about each other and we step up when our community has needs. And I think that fundamental care that we have for one another is special and it's part of that like big or small city, big town. Or whatever method that is.
Right.
But where you like, you know, walk around town and you run into people you know, I think that is really special. And I love that about Spokane.
That is, that's a very Spokane thing. I, I mean, I can't, I can go in any space and I'll probably, might not know somebody there, but they know someone that I know. The, the degrees of separation are like, is like one and a half in Spokane.
Exactly. Yeah. And I know for some people, that's probably like not something you love, but I love it.
I love it. No, it's great. Um, that also just makes everything like this feel more like a community too. So, well, I'm, I'm, I will be watching the election results very closely this year. And I, I wish for the best for you.
Thank you so much. And thank you for having me. I think it's really cool having people who are, you know, doing podcasts and, you know, sharing stories with people, get involved with local politics. So.
Yeah.
I'm very happy to be the first.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm happy that you're the first as well. So, well, thank you all so much for listening to Spokast. Until next time, peace.